Okay, today is Wednesday, January twenty eighth, two thousand twenty five. Happy New Year, February one, not twenty, January eighth, two thousand twenty five. Happy New Year, everyone. This is our first meeting of the Gloucester School Committee of this year. We are meeting at the Gloucester High School Library at thirty-two Leslie Johnson Road in Gloucester, Massachusetts. The public is welcome to attend meetings in person or alternatively through the Zoom link provided on the agenda. The meeting notice will reflect if the meeting is being Zoom only. As the recent amendments to the open meeting law allow, the school committee may continue to hold meetings remotely. Please note, the in-person meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the remote connection. If you are calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you are watching on a computer or device, there is a raise hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. I will call the meeting to order and we should do introductions. You're first.
Erin Frisch, CFO.
Amy Mascolino, Assistant Superintendent.
Ben Lummis, Superintendent.
Kevin Keane, School Committee.
Melissa Fred, School Committee.
Amy Clancy, School Committee.
Bill Melvin, School Committee.
Yvonne O, School Committee.
Jane Herman, Student Advisory Council.
Stephanie Delaney, C, Rec. 11.
And I will take the commission of Gloucester Public Schools as for all students to be successful, engaged lifelong learners. And I ask that you. Without objection, I would like to take a report from Jane Herman for the Gloucester High School Student Advisory Council.
First, I'd like to report that a GHS student who's in the automotive program recently worked with Gloucester and Manchester Harbor Masters and is representing both communities at the Boston Boat Show this week. Second, yesterday, the district level DECA competition was held in Danvers. Gloucester DECA students did extremely well in their respective events, and many students even placed for the state level conference, which will be held in Boston at the end of February. Third, I'd like to report news from the Youth Advisory Council. They worked to create a winter gratitude wall at GHS outside of the cafeteria. GHS students and staff wrote what they were grateful for on paper snowplains that would be displayed on the wall. Additionally, in December, two Youth Advisory Council students received certificates of completion for the climate change leadership program. Since these two students participated, GHS will receive a second micro grant of seven hundred and fifty dollars for climate and environment-related projects. Now that we're back in school, we have reached the halfway point in term two, which means progress reports have come out for all GHS students. National Honor Society members are working with various students to ensure they are on track to complete the term. Midterms will be held in the second week of February, so students are also busily preparing for their upcoming exam. After a successful set of shows in December, the GHS theater program has shifted gears towards the spring musical. Stay tuned for more details, including casting and show dates in the upcoming months. The sophomore class is hosting a fundraiser at the Azorian tomorrow night, January ninth, from four to nineteen p.m. As long as you mention the fundraiser, a portion of both dine-in and takeout proceeds will go towards the class. Additionally, the GHS swim and dive team has their annual bowling fundraiser this Sunday, January twelfth, from five to seven p.m. at Cape Van Leeuks. Finally, with Valentine's Day fast approaching, student council and NHS students are preparing for the infamous secret pals week. During this week, each student is assigned a teacher with the purpose of giving them a small gift or note each day throughout the week leading up to Valentine's Day. We do this annually as it is a perfect opportunity to show support for our faculty members. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Can I just ask a quick question? Sure. Did you say the bowling fundraiser was Sunday or Sunday?
Sunday.
Sunday. Is Sunday coming?
Yes, January twelfth, five to seven.
I thank you, Jane, for your excellent report, always very helpful and detailed and really informative about what's happening in high school, especially with all the activities of our students. I've got something for you, which is the Masters Association of Schools for attendance certificate of academic excellence. And that is provide or awarded to a high school student in each district for excellence. It's given to high school students who distinguish themselves in the pursuit of excellence during their high school careers. You certainly exemplify that. So I know you're looking at a number of excellent schools for next year, and we wish you luck for the rest of the school year, obviously, in all these are doing, but also wish you luck in figuring out what's next after you cross the graduation stage here. You'll stay in June, so.
Thank you.
Thanks to you.
Okay, next item of business is oral communications. You're welcome to say, or if the schedule allows. Next item of business is oral communications. If there's anybody that would like to speak online, raise your hand. Then ready your person and stand. We don't have a podium today, so right there is good.
Okay, I didn't know if I had to get another speaker. Right here is good.
Yeah.
Do I have to do anything or just speak?
Just speak.
All right, here we go.
Dave and address.
All right, I wasn't trying to. All right, Carrie Callahan Donahue, and I'm at twenty-nine House Street. I'm also a proud member of the Union of Gloucester Educators. Good evening, thank you for allowing me to speak before you today. I'm here this evening to address a decision that I believe compromises principles of fairness and equity. The decision to withhold retroactive pay from our retired paraprofessionals is not just an issue of numbers on balance sheet. It's a matter of respect and trust. These employees were here with us, working diligently and with dedication throughout the entire duration of lengthy and challenging contract negotiations. They gave their best years of service to this district, and they deserve the compensation they earned, even if their retirement occurred during lengthy bargaining process. It is important to consider the broader implications of this decision. Not paying these individuals the time they worked sends a message that hard work and loyalty of employees, especially those nearing retirement, can be dismissed or ignored simply because a contract wasn't settled in time. This not only undermines trust, but could create a chilling effect for current employees who might one day face similar circumstances. The fear that their years of service and compensation they earned could be held up due to delays in negotiations may cause some to question whether it's worth staying in their positions. We cannot afford to set such a precedent. If we allow this decision to stand, what message are we sending to our dedicated staff, especially those nearing the end of their careers? If the compensation they earned isn't honored because contracts weren't signed in time, it could continue to erode the trust between the school committee and our staff. I ask you to reconsider this decision, not just a matter of financial policy, but as a matter of decency. The individuals affected by this decision gave their time, effort, and expertise to this district. They fulfilled their end of the bargain, and we now ask the school committee to fulfill theirs. The legacy we leave as a school district isn't just about test scores. It's about how we treat each other. Let's make sure we're setting the right example, one based on fairness, integrity, and respect for our dedicated staff. Thank you for your time. I hope that you'll consider these words thoughtfully as you move forward with the decisions that impact all of us, students, staff, and the community. Thank you.
Two people.
Hi. My name's Jennifer Grant. I live at Four Stewart Avenue in Beverly. I'm a first grade teacher at West Parish and a member of the Union of Gloucester Educators. I wanted to follow up on something that was discussed at the December school committee meeting. Principal Cook was presenting MCAS results and talked about how they are now using STAR testing in the high school. School committee members were asking why there weren't more gains in data. The answer is so obvious, and as a school committee member in a district that follows a tiered system of support, I would hope you already know the answer. A lack of interventions is one of them. Three times a year, teachers sit in data meetings to identify students who are struggling and not meeting benchmarks. We figure out what skills they need to be successful. Then we put them in intervention groups with other students who are struggling with the same thing. It all sounds great, but we need Paris to run those interventions. At West Parish, we used to have three designated interventionists. One position was cut two years ago and never filled. The other two were consistently polled as sub-coverage. Intervention should be happening every day because we know every day matters. I agree with you that every day matters, but it's very frustrating when that's our district motto, but we don't run it in our schools. We don't follow that in the way we run our schools. In the youngest grades, we are trying to help these struggling students catch up before the gap increases. An intervention group that doesn't meet consistently is just a waste of everyone's time. Do you know what a tier-two intervention student becomes without intervention? A special education referral. So the next time you look at data presented on our students and you want to know why kids aren't meeting benchmark, why they aren't making more gains, ask, is that student flagged for intervention? How often did their intervention group actually take place? Then reflect and ask yourself how you can fix this perpetual problem because you are, after all, our school committee. Thank you.
There are two hands raised. Mine, Rachel Rex. Dawn, okay. Dawn, Yvonne O, you can speak, please.
I'm Dawn Leoni, one ten Prospect Street, apartment seven in Gloucester. I'm actually speaking to you as a parent today. So I'm coming to you as a parent of my delightful middle school student, but I want to bring to the committee's attention some challenges that my son has been facing recently in his partnership program for students with autism and social emotional disabilities. He has reported to me that the environment has become increasingly difficult for him due to the presence of an unsafe student and the lack of available support staff when he is in need of help. As a result, he has told me he has begun to have outbursts in class when he's having trouble processing a situation. He is disengaged from his peers outside of his core peer group that he has known since he was in preschool, and he now spends much of his time in the partnership support block in isolation, fixating on objects like magnets on the floor and in the corner. This behavior appears to be a coping mechanism as he tries to shield himself from a situation that is making him uncomfortable and anxious. This is the polar opposite of what we should, of what he should be experiencing during this period when he should feel safe and supported. But more concerning is that these struggles are not only occurring at school and his participation in the classroom, but they're now spilling over into his home life as well. His increased difficulty with tolerance towards others, including family members, is noticeable, and we are seeing signs of emotional regression that we hadn't encountered before. It is deeply troubling to witness these challenges and these changes as they are directly linked to the current learning environment where he is unable to receive services when needed, to be fully engaged, and feel safe in his learning environment. I do understand that resources may be limited, but I urge the committee to consider additional support for all students who may be similarly impacted. The lack of adequate staff, a safe and structured environment, is impeding my son's social emotional progress, and I am concerned about the long-term effects this will have on his interpersonal relationships. I appreciate your time and consideration of these issues, and I would welcome any suggestions or solutions that could help address this situation in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. And Rachel Rex.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Rachel Rex. I live at sixteen El New Avenue in Beverly, and I am the co-president of the Union of Gloucester Educators. I come before you today to address matters of great importance to the future of our district and the quality of education we provide to the students of Gloucester. These matters demand our collective attention and responsibility, particularly as we reflect on the events of this past November and look ahead to the challenges we continue to face. First, I must remind this body of the significant responsibility you bear in the work stoppage that transpired in November. The event was not merely a moment of disruption. It was a call to action, underscoring the urgent need for safe, equitable working conditions, fair pay, and meaningful dialogue between educators and district leadership. The decisions made by this committee, or in some cases, the lack thereof, played a critical role in the circumstances leading to the strike and dragging it out fifteen days. It is imperative that this committee acknowledges its role and recommits to fostering a collaborative and respectful environment where the voices of educators are not just heard, but acted upon. The stakes are too high for anything less. Equally pressing is the issue of attracting and retaining highly qualified educators in our district. Just this school year alone, we have witnessed a troubling number of resignations leaving classrooms without the experienced, dedicated professionals our students deserve. Though not unique to Gloucester, this trend has been exacerbated by your actions, and it is something we must confront with urgency and resolve. The responsibility to address this challenge lies squarely with Gloucester School Committee. To ensure that Gloucester remains a competitive and desirable destination for top-tier educators, you must prioritize competitive, livable compensation, a respectful, safe, supportive work environment, and professional growth opportunities vastly different than what Matt Bergman provided on November fourth. These are not luxuries, but necessities in a landscape where educators have opinions and where their expertise is in high demand. Moreover, investing in our educators is an investment in our students and their futures. Failing to act decisively jeopardizes not only our district standing, but the educational outcomes of the children entrusted to us. I urge this committee to take these issues to heart and to act with the sense of urgency and responsibility they demand. Our educators, and more importantly, our students, are counting on you to rise to this occasion. Thank you for your time and intention to these critical matters. I am confident that together, we can build a stronger, more vibrant educational community for Gloucester.
Oh, go ahead.
My name is Sean Lilly, and I reside at Fork Kindfield Road in Rockport. I am an educator here at the high school in the Life Skills Program, and I have the privilege of being a member of the Union of Gloucester Educators. Conventional wisdom says that any extreme situation, crisis, or conflict reveals who you are, who you really are at your core. Well, this community certainly experienced an event that qualifies as an extreme situation, crisis, and conflict. The strike we as a union were forced to undertake in November. That struggle definitely revealed who my brother and sister educators are, which is why it really is, as I said, a privilege to be a UGE member. I still don't know how someone like me gets to be part of a group of people like this. When I think of how the strike brought forth the best of Rachel Rex's leadership, Matt Lewis's passion, Rich Francis's strength, Grace Scola's talent for giving strength to others, Jess Ruggles's endless energy, Eric Lee's quiet resolve, and the solidarity and decency I was on the receiving end of from Dan Graham, Dawn Leoni, Christine Travers, Marissa Lundie, April Haudler, Amy Clanton Clayton, and about a hundred other people who became siblings instead of just colleagues. I know I landed with people who, when forced into a terrible but genuinely historic moment in time, showed just how what's good about them got better when being what's good about them became both critical and difficult. There's no need to go into any great detail about what the strike revealed about the character of the mayor and the school committee. It's a matter of public record. It's enough to say that what was revealed about who the mayor and the school committee really are stands in stark contrast to what was revealed about who we as educators really are. But what is worse and what is relevant now is that who they were during the work stoppage, the labor equivalent of a state of war, continues to be who they were during a time of labor peace. In the aftermath of a contract being settled, a handful of retired pairs are being denied retro pay on a technicality. Really? Is that what you want to be? Is that who you, is that what you want to be famous for? Finding a reason not to pay just a little bit more to a group of women, and they're all women, who gave decades of their lives to working where their most vulnerable students for what was never a living wage? We've heard all this talk about healing and coming together and moving on. If those pairs got their retro pay, don't you think that would go a long way to making that talk about healing and coming together and moving on real? Or at least believable? But I guess we shouldn't be surprised. The mayor and committee showed us who they were when showing us who they were mattered most. I guess they who they were then is who they are now. But we, the members of the UGE, are who we showed ourselves to be, and you can bet the house we'll continue to be. We'll continue to show the leadership and passion and strength and energy and resolve and solidarity and decency that were our stock in trade in November, two thousand twenty-four. We will continue to show up for each other, stand up for what we know is right, and hold our elected leaders accountable when we know they're wrong. Not every moment is a moment of truth, but our moment of truth taught us to be what we were then all the time. Whether our elected leaders will be what they were in that same moment of truth is up to them. No matter what, we'll be here and we'll be ready.
My name's Eric Lee. I live at Four Spring Lane. I'm a biology teacher, and I'm going to bring this to a different level. I'm going to bring this, it's hard to go after those people, and I agree entirely with what they said. We are losing people, but I'm going to speak about public and student safety and faculty safety. When I came to my classroom this year, I saw near the sinks a simple sign that said, "Handwashing only." And it was just taped, it was a sticker that was put there. Now, what I'm about to say here is that I realize how important water is to all of our students, the bubblers and everything, and safe water that's there. I've asked multiple times about a schedule as when filters would be changed. It's never been provided. I've talked to the custodians. They tell me that that's being done as well. But this was troubling in the fact that I've continued to ask my principal over and over again what the results were and why I had these signs that there are, some would say simply, "Do not use." Biology classroom, figuring out why is it just hand washing as well? Multiple times, we've asked the principal, what is this? And we found out that there is lead, or higher levels of lead. And we've asked for the data to continue to be given to us. Meanwhile, the bubblers in that area are covered up with plastic at this point, and recently, water was spewing out of them. When they took the plastic off, it was absolutely disgusting what was there. This is what our students and what our faculty is drinking, and we have not gotten any of the answers. Multiple times, about five or six emails, and the principal has tried to follow through, but never has there been the issue. So I think it needs to be put out to the public. I understand that there's letters that are going out there, but that there is a real concern whether this water is safe as well. And there are teachers who have been drinking that water there for years upon years. Several years back here, they changed several faucets out, and this is a situation that just indicates the lack of transparency. And why would there not be something that put up on that to say, "Do not drink," or other things like this? But "handwashing only" and "do not use," and no explanation after that? This has gone on for months, and it's about time that the public hears about it. Our safety is important, and that of the students is safe. And if there's nothing that is of issue here, why can we not get the data? Thank you.
That concludes the oral communications. And I just want to, I know last meeting and then this meeting, the issue of the paraprofessionals pay has been brought up. And there is a legal document that was signed by Rachel Rex and Mary Ann Aiello. Also, a large group of people were on the negotiating committee, so we, as a school committee, need to follow the legal agreement that was signed by all of us. And I just want to point out that the clause in the Return to Work Agreement is paragraph number four, and it states retroactive pay that is effective July one, two thousand twenty-three, for members of the gate group that are still employed as of the date of the execution of this agreement will be paid later than December thirteen, two thousand twenty-three. As a municipality, as people that are stewards of the city's money, we cannot do things contrary to a legal agreement. And that's the agreement that was signed and reviewed by multiple people before it was all executed. So I understand that people are emotional, that this is personal, but I also know that when you go through negotiations, it's a legal process, and you wind up with an agreement at the end that not everything gets in that either party wants, and other things get invested. You know, you may wish you had changed, I'll phrase differently. So that is what this agreement was signed on November, you know, when we finished the strike. So we really don't have a mechanism to pay this because it was signed by the representatives of the. Okay, recognitions. Do we have any recognition? We've been out for a bit.
Yeah. Just want to give a shout out to the high school and middle school students that were involved in the holiday concert. We've been with them since then, but it was a terrific show, included, and it included the middle school band, the high school bands, and the high school chorus. And just a great show put on by a tremendous amount of students and people that are involved in our music department really did a great job. It's a completely full house in the auditorium, probably the largest crowd I've seen in the high school auditorium in a long time. It was great to see, so.
And we have an O'Malley one coming up this Friday, correct?
So I just got an invite to one.
At O'Malley. Okay, next item of business, consent agenda. Does anyone have any items they would like to read with? I'm going to review the decided agenda as. Okay, roll call vote, please, Stephanie, since Mayor Berg is online. Ms. Texiera Price.
Yes.
Mr. McKean.
Yes.
Jefferson, Clinton.
Yes.
Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
Mayor Berga.
Yes.
Ms. Fomini.
Yes.
Next item of business, deliberation on education issues, Mr. President.
So I'll give an update on a number of matters here, and then go right into upcoming years. And then also just a quick update on my evaluation process. So. So as we say in the Gloucester Schools, every day matters, and everybody belongs. Everybody we aspire to and keep, and we're working towards. Just give a few updates here. So sorry about a night, there's our awards and award board tomorrow night here at the high school. You can see that in addition to the class of twenty twenty-eight awardees, as long as. Yep, that's great, thank you. In addition to the class of twenty twenty-eight awardees, we also have additions every year for the junior, senior, sophomore, junior, and senior class. And they and their families have been invited to the award night tomorrow night. Bishop Keane and Mayor Berg will be speaking as well as yours truly. The Harlem Wizards are coming to town, so this is something that was started by the current junior class when they were sophomores a year ago. So we're going to have the second visit of Harlem Wizards upcoming on February first. So it's a great community event and great entertainment as well. And mostly the entertainment is watching the staff and faculty team who badly the Wizards. But the Wizards are, they're great. They're great entertainment, great show, and for a great cause, to support the sophomore class. And also, any tickets that are purchased through the elementary schools support their PTOs as well. So it was a full house last year, and we're tracking it again this year. So part of that process is that Harlem Wizards will come and visit each of the elementary schools and talk to them about some inspirational messages, but also show them some tips and tricks on basketball court as well. So we're looking forward to that. Here is the official announcement on January twenty-seventh of the elementary music, so the district band. I've got two updates on the elementary music. First one is the district. First one is the District Wyatt Band, and that concert is on January 27th. A couple, few Mondays from now, a couple Mondays from now, and that's 6:30 at the O'Malley Auditorium. That's open to public and free. Then another update, so you'll remember last year, we had a pilot program at the Beeman School for elementary chorus, just for Beeman students. And that was supported by the North Education Foundation. That was very successful. At that time, we also had, in addition to music teacher at Beeman, also had some high school students who helped out, from intern mentors, volunteers. We are expanding the elementary chorus pilot program to, for the fifth graders from all elementary schools, similar to what the all, all elementary school bands. Again, this is the result of North Education Foundation supporting the efforts. It's like it had so many ways in arts programs. West Parish Music Teacher, Mr. Prestia Giovanni, will be the staff leader. Also working with another staff member. What's that? I know it. It's a hero. It's free to all elementary, fourth graders to sign up. It begins January 15th, so next week. And also, just like last year, some of high school, high school students will be volunteers and mentors. Work with the students, so. At this point, performance are currently planned for April and June. Maybe that might adjust, depending on where it goes, but off to the next step of this pilot. Also, Beeman, we are coming, these are families and friends of Beeman, not for general public, but just wanted you to know that Beeman is also getting into the groove with their winter concerts. These are rescheduled for November, and that's, they're all happening January 16th at the school during Easter Day. Good work on the music front. So just want to sort of shout out to, not only East Veterans PTO, but really the Fraternity Club holding Gordon Seafood. In honor of Sal Parisi, in memory of Sal Parisi, I'll talk about him in a moment. We raised $3,000 to donate to the PTO to support student programming, enrichment, and family events. Mr. Parisi was a well-respected young man who was a beloved member of the Fraternity Club. As you know, he was just a couple of doors up from East Veterans School. And he's someone who really cared a lot about our young people and the neighborhood around East Veterans. He died prematurely a few years ago, but he wanted, as part of his legacy, to provide a generous gift to the youth of Boston. So members, his friends from the Fraternity Club organized this and spearheaded it and pulled in Gordon Seafood, and then also connected with the PTO. And by doing that, able to provide support to the young folks at East Veterans School. So really appreciate the Fraternity Club recognizing Mr. Parisi and his legacy, but also supporting our students at our school. So just really appreciative of that gift. East Veterans, that's more news about East Veterans. Congratulations to the 90 students who had perfect attendance for the first trimester of school. You can see him filling up the grand staircase there. A year ago, just in terms of making progress, there were 36 students who had perfect attendance through the first trimester. This year, it's 90. So I really appreciate that. Well done for not only the students, but their families, of course, and also our teachers and school leadership, to make sure that everyone, more and more kids are getting a message that everyday matters. I really appreciate that. Another event coming up is the West Parish BMX Bike Event, which is focused, something they have on annual event, but it's really focused on bike safety and also building positivity and resilience for students. So I'll get to enjoy that in the gym there on January 10th. And then as Jane said earlier, about the DECA competition. So we always do quite well in this and have a lot of folks moving on to state conference. And again, this year, you can see there are two, three, four, five, six, I mean, well more than 10, almost 15 kids who have done well enough to qualify for the state conference. There's a great picture of them in Danvers competing, you know, competing. And you can see it's in also the business-related themes and topics. So business solutions, operations, and innovation, and business planning, and marketing as well. So just really appreciate the leadership from the high school and staff there supporting our students to really do well, be well-prepared for the DECA competitions, both District One and now state. As you know, we've had a number of students go on to nationals as well, so that's what will have same success this year. So any questions about any of the updates there? Okay, now we're going to get a presentation on the collective bargaining agreement. It's an update, update on next steps from the agreements as part of our report. So you'll remember that through the negotiation process, came up with some really significant, or next steps. And want to just highlight where we are and also check in with the committee about one in particular. So just to reiterate and try to reinforce the way we want to work, as we have been and actually going forward, a basic approach to leadership, our schools, input, decision-making, and then also really our work. So really captured here, a collaborative, inclusive approach. We've taken many, many ways at the team level, at the school level. And also, that's as I described during our last meeting, there's evidence of that in the bargaining agreement as well, both in the GTA One and the Gabe One. And I'll sort of describe some of those as we go forward tonight. So that means that deepening our work, improving our practice, improving student learning, active achievement really does take all of us, you know, responsibility from everybody, all different roles, working together. That includes listening, listening, you know, for input from a wide range of people and roles. That's how we make our best decisions, to get our best ideas. And that also includes opportunities for, you know, across our schools, for shared decision-making, shared responsibilities, shared leadership as well. So these are things we're doing perfectly, but do have quite a few opportunities for them, and we need to build them further. This needs to be the way we operate. It's the most effective way. It utilizes people's skills and experiences and perspectives to the greatest impact, and it helps all of us do our best work. We have a balanced approach to improvement, so you'll always see we're talking about improving. We're identifying what we're doing well and also what we need to get better at. And then part of that is being openly transparent, both about our successes, but also our area of challenge. And I'll point out a couple of areas where you'll see that as evidence in terms of our next steps around the agreements that were made and the collective bargaining agreement. And then clarity, support, and being accountable. So this really helps people do their best work. So clearly defining roles, responsibilities, and effective practice. That can be on a team, that can be in a grade, that can be a separate area, that can be for a teacher or a professional or a principal. But we need to continue to clearly define those roles so people know what they're expected to do. But they, at the same time, they're supported to do well. And that might be in through training, professional development. That might be in feedback or coaching. That might be in supporting, working with colleagues. But really, that support is on many levels. But if you have clarity in what you're expected to do, and support on how to do well, then you should be able to be professional responsibilities. And the last piece is support and accountability if someone isn't getting their expectations completed. And that's also part of making sure that people are able to do things well and can work well with each other to do things well, and also fill in their responsibilities. So that's a combination. You'll see some evidence of that in the work I'm about to talk about. But it's sort of a, I would say, the way we're trying to work and a more sort of clear communication about that. And so in terms of the follow-up work from the collective bargaining agreement, I'm going to go quickly, but then just dig into one of them more deeply. That one I'm going to dig in more deeply in a moment is the Joint Learning Group on Student Learning and Achievement. So the posting for that, I'm sort of giving you here as presenting it in your packet, shows some of the actions that are being taken on these things right now. And also timeframe about when they'll be sort of either start or launch or sort of get rolling, basically. So I'll mention, I'll talk about the work on student learning and achievement in a moment. I'll go on to the other ones right now. Another really important piece that was reached through the negotiations with GTA and Gabe was addition-based and school-based behavior support teams. So this is sort of the results of the work and concerns around student behavior in our schools and supporting students to do their best and making sure we continue to have safe learning environments. But also really supportive as well. So that's about, just as a reminder, the school-based teams will have specific roles and responsibilities around identifying good practices and support and building school cultures, school and classroom cultures, and also supporting students in clarifying roles for folks when students need additional support on behavior or other reasons. And the addition version of that as well. Some of the schools have a version of this already in place, but we're going to clarify and sort of create a description and work with principals on what that will be and who should be involved in that. And then we'll also be posting, creating a sort of a clear description with that work that we have at the district level as well, then posting for that, for folks to do in those two teams, basically. To move it on, and you're welcome to stop in a moment, teacher evaluation and joint planning team updated evaluation priority standards. So this is the team that agreed upon in negotiations.
You moved on.
I moved on.
Okay, I have a question.
Sorry about that. Careful on line.
With the posting, how does it work for people that put their name in the hat to be part of these two groups?
Yeah, so it depends. Oh, yeah, sure, sure. Yeah. So on many of these teams, not all of them, many of them, if they're happening outside work hours, members are compensated at a contractual hourly rate, depending on their role. Administrators are not. This is really specifically for Gabe and GTA members, for the most part. That's really what we're talking about mostly in terms of staff roles here. In terms of the selection of those, it probably depends on any, on the specific team or working group in terms of the processes involved in that. Also, how many people are looking for and what role it is. But that's when I discuss, when I talk about, you know, clarifying or defining the description for that, for that team or that work, that's part of what goes into that, figuring out exactly. We'll actually look at that in a little more depth in terms of the work improvement system. Yeah, there's also, and also it can change with different teams. We'll describe the third work group in detail, to give you an example of how some folks are conditional, some people are not. But we'll call, we'll get to that. We'll talk about that.
And the size of teams have yet to be, I mean, there's framework, but not necessarily a number that we came up to in the brief.
Yeah, right. The teams and not, the negotiating teams and not create that level of detail, no. That's what we're working through and drafting those right now, and then we'll continue to hone the requirements to post. So moving on to the, so the last one here is, on this, on this page, is the work that we'll do with GTA members on updating the priority standards in our contract on evaluation. And we're doing that because Desi has rolled out a new teacher evaluation rubric. We want to make sure our priority standards are up to date with that and aligned with that teacher evaluation rubric. You'll see that, you know, there'll be four administrators and four GTA members that either could apply or be named at GTA. That's relative to GTA. Who participates in that. Moving on, a few other ones. So Gabe, we'll be negotiating and we'll keep on having a professional development advisory team. So that is a group of Gabe members who are looking at and advising our team and obviously saying what type of professional development and learning and what topics that they would like to focus on for next year. Okay, we have to work with Gabe to defy, to sort of define the size of that team, how it operates, and Gabe will be in the members of that. And they'll work and they will advise a number of people as well, as we look forward to next year or for next year in terms of what we're going to focus on. Designation training for ESPs, that's also defined in, or sort of formalized in the contract. It's something we start in school year 22, 23, but it isn't systematized yet in a way that we're really tracking who has had and who hasn't very specifically. So we'll be fully implementing that on the 25, 26. Summer professional development day for ESPs, for folks who are in special education described programs that obviously will launch in summer 2025, but it's going to be based on input from the Gabe Professional Development Advisory Teams. Listen above there. And then plan for one-hour ESP time after school, so one hour per month. ESPs are now responsible for having, participating in meeting or training at a school level. Part of that is, in the contract, is that they're made aware of when those will happen, when, you know, by the end of the school year, I think it's, school year prior, I think it is. Obviously, that will happen for next year because we are just defining the school calendar next year at this point. A few more here, because I, you know, there was a lot of really important sort of next steps created through the contracts. Union orientation for new hires during the school year, that's what happened periodically based on our new hires. And more GTA leadership on scheduling that. The scheduling of that is part of the language in the contract. To be, there are a number of administrative changes related to leaves, the requests, sick day accrual. These are things that aren't, you know, obvious to sort of sort through the memorandum of agreement. So our resource department is working on sort of a, one, sort of clear steps on leave requests, but also sort of clear sort of FAQ type thing on the change that were made in the negotiations. That will be available in February. The joint committee agreed to a stipend imposition, so that's to update and make current all the stipend imposition that are sort of documented, that are documented and listed in the GTA contract. We have to work with GTA leadership from that committee and expect that to be happening sort of winter and spring 2025. And the last piece here, which we'll talk more about tonight, which is the 183rd workday that's required, now requires just prior to the opening of school, on every fall. We have to update the 25, 26 calendar to reflect that, update that tonight, but then plan for and schedule it in upcoming, you know, school years as well. So that's just to give you an update on sort of a high-level update on the areas we are moving on. We can move on, give you a sense of the timeframe there. The one thing, the one area or one group really wanted to engage the committee on tonight and give you more complete update is the work group on improving academic achievement and teaching student learning. So you may remember from December when I reported, this is significantly a very important group, and it's a group that's going to include teachers and professionals and administrators and school members and community members as well. It'll include building level representatives from the union, from GTA, as well as Gabe and GTA presidents. And the sort of, the purpose of this group, as we've discussed in the decline negotiations, is to take some real joint responsibility on understanding how we are doing, where we're making progress and where we have progress to make. And then be responsible for identifying, do that analysis of a local form of student learning, at least one academic challenge for each grade range, grade Spanish, I'll say. And then also reporting out to the committee, to the public, and then from the public on what they've learned, what, how we're doing, and how we need to improve, or what we need to improve and focus on three times a year. So that's the basic concept of the group. Can take a fair bit of working through the launch of that. At least one member from the following roles, and you can see them listed there, and I've sort of, you know, sort of described, you know, explained them already or named them already. The challenge here is you typically will want more than one person in the number of the assembly's roles and make multiple people from these roles. So one of the challenges is how do you keep it of an annual size to be productive and the work can be well done? Some folks say you want to limit the number of a team to two pizzas a day. How many, there are people who can eat two pizzas, two pizzas a day. This will be, this will be more pizzas for this group, okay? People want to talk through with you and get the school-based input of it tonight on just that question itself in terms of your numbers of folks and how organized, and we'll get to that question in a moment. Actually, we're getting a question right now. We described a couple more things, which is just in terms of the pay. You asked earlier about the stipends and pay for this work. This is, in some ways, a unique work group or team because it has a wide range of members. So administrators aren't paid. It was part of their, their work. They're not paid for this sort of team. If I are agreement with the GTA and Gabe, the GTA building representatives and the GTA president, Gabe president, were not getting paid additional. They're paid as part of their union vision goals. But the teachers and ESPs and parent professionals who participate would get paid. Their contracts are out of rate. So teachers would get the $37. So teachers will get the thirty seven dollars, three cents per hour, and that's been negotiated, I think, two contracts ago. And parent professionals would earn whatever rate they're currently earning as hourly wage. And that's on top of, that's assuming that is happening outside of the school day. Sure as well. But that sort of thing is, so that's how we compensate folks. And those are pretty typical for work that's happening outside of the school day. That's additional pay for folks who will work outside of the school day. Let's end that question specific for this one. So some questions that we like to sort of pose to users, see if you have any input on is just a member question. Any ways or thoughts about how to limit this or how to focus or how to structure it? You know, example there is if you divide the group into pre-K to five and six to twelve. Suggestions and conversation here about how to recruit and name community members. Okay, love to get any input from committee on that. Another good question that that you're welcome to chime in on is external or internal facilitation. Do we need to do our administrators and some and some folks on committee actually need the facilitation? Or do we have external facilitation? And or is there some combination for that sort of thing? How efficient do we meet? And then there's also a question that the group will work on about decision making. How does how does a group of that size make decisions? So these are questions we're working through and thinking about. And happy to take any thoughts or comments from the committee on any or or maybe not all of these, but at least any of those.
Yeah, oh, we're looking for some sort of, we're looking for one thing to work on from each each school level, correct?
Yeah.
Level that you're moved by.
Yep.
Doesn't make sense to have three separate, three separate groups. Just looking at the list of people that are going to be involved, it's going to be a huge group, I guess. So that's might be a little bit difficult to manage, but, you know, I think if we break it down into three, that'll certainly help. And I I think my other question is, are there outside entities that can come in? You know, you talked about, you know, maybe having an outside service company kind of facilitated. Are there outfits like that out there that can come in and do that?
Yeah, there are a number, any number of facilitators, consultants or stuff who can help those help facilitate the process. We, of course, want them to, I mean, that'd be school based and, you know, really, obviously. But then the crucial piece is there in helping groups, you know, school groups and school teams, you know, analyze, understand data and then drill, you know, work through it in a timely manner and support the team in making decisions on, you know, what to focus on, really, you know. This this group isn't responsible for like deciding what exactly to do, but to raise up areas that we're doing well on and raise and identify areas that we need to really focus on. But then the school based teams and district, you know, we work work together to actually, you know, what's the action to take. But yeah, so definitely you're 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 able, we'll be able to identify external person who can support that. And I think there are advantages and disadvantages of both, you know. Yes. Other thoughts on that? Oh, yes. Mayors.
Yeah, the only thing I would say, counting the the list, it's a baker's dozen, thirteen people. I've made a concerted effort of reducing the number of members of boards and commissions because I don't think you can have a quorum issue because I don't think it's really that kind of a committee. But, you know, as I say, about too many cooks, it's it's a lot of people to wrangle at just thirteen. We're talking about at least one member. You're talking at least thirteen people. So I would, I wouldn't stray too men, too too far from that. It it just becomes unruly. And, you know, I I think everybody's got their 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 head in the game and they want to achieve something. But when you just have a lot of people, it's difficult to just to manage it and and achieve something at the end of each meeting. That is all.
I have a thought on separating the groups by level, though. I think eventually that is helpful, but I think to start, people need to understand what the approaches are at different levels. And I know we've talked a lot at some of our, you know, we're talking about academics and we're talking about and how students transition from elementary to middle to high. You know, what does that look like? And, you know, we hear feedback of teachers at one level saying forgetting students' lyrics. Ready or whatever. I would, I think having those conversations about how do certain levels and we know, you know, I think we know best a lot what the elementary has done because we, you know, implementation of different curriculum, we hear about it, they present about it. But I'm not sure if people in the low and high know necessarily what they're presented to us or if they have enough opportunities to think vertically so that they can understand and and just learn from each other what they are doing to know where we're at as a baseline. So I think having a couple meetings where everybody shares ideas and shares information would be helpful as group to, in particular for having community members who probably know their children's experience, but may not know what the next level brings and how that is assessed.
I just have questions because I'm looking at this and it's like, I don't, I don't have a good understanding of it because I wasn't in the conversations and negotiations. I wanted to look when this came about. So it seems to me there needs to be more information about what the charge is exactly and what your, what the expectations are before you even involve the community and people outside of the school, right? I think you need to go into it really organized. Not not structured in a way that you can be flexible, but it just seems to me there's a lot of work to be done before you can put this team together. And I'm wondering what your thoughts are on that.
Actually, you can see in your packet is the sort of the draft. It's a draft very clearly on it of the posting, it's listing numbers essentially, or, you know, asking for numbers.
And you're asking members of the community already?
No, no, this, no, no, it's draft, it's draft, okay? And you're looking at your input, this is all stuff and communities put on it. That's why it's in your packet. But in that, you'll see more of the thinking or inter. That's a key place to be clear on what the charge of the of the team is, the group is, and what the effective work is. Okay, so it's sort of laid out in that. And because in order to get, like, I agree with you that in order to get people to sort of to to sign up, say, or part, you know, become members of the group, they've got to be clear both on what the work is, what the goals are, and what the expectations would be. And so you can see that in in your packet there, just a draft of, and that's our our current thinking on trying to communicate and clear.
I just don't see us ready for that already. I just feel like there's more conversation that needs to be had looking at this. But.
So so when you say we, I'm trying to.
I mean, we, the administration in the district.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I understand administration get involved with GTA and the Paris to get the information. I just, it's just not clear actually. But like I said, maybe it's because I wasn't part of the conversation where this came from.
Well, well, yeah, so.
I mean, you're calling that we want to improve academic achievement. Okay, that's a that's a topic this big. So what, where is this group reporting to? What is the goal?
So, right, so.
You know, the school committee member involved. I understand that. I don't know who it's going to be or or how that's going to come about, but like, what is the purpose of this group other than getting ideas?
The purpose of the group is is to really to be a public, I don't want to say public body, it sounds too too formal, like. But to be a public body, who's, and and but diverse group, representing multiple roles.
Right, which I support a hundred percent.
Yeah, okay. Who is, so who's looking closely at our student achievement data and seeing that's going to be, and they'll define, which they'll decide on themselves what you're looking at based on some recommendations, okay? And and from there, being really a primary group that's reporting to the public about how we're doing. So there's more voices involved in that analysis, and more voices in in involved doing responsibility for that all the reporting. And then more more voices involved or more roles, perspectives involved in what to address. That's really, like I said before, it's a collaborative approach, it's inclusive, but it also develops more shared responsibility among who's really reporting and taking, you know, responsibility, be accountable for the progress we need to make, and also our success is too.
So is this going to be a group that comes out and tells us that we're understaffed and we need more T N two intervention? And people leaving the district and there's not enough people here, and that's part of the problem? Or is it a different point? That's where I think I'm getting caught up in because I hear what's happening here tonight with public comment, and then I'm hearing this. I'm like, okay, is this to address that? Or is this to actually talk about student achievement and getting into the data as opposed to why we're not?
I I don't want to be on this speaking because I was, this wasn't, this was, you know, and so, you know, you know, you're you're behind Genesis as well. So but what I would say is, no, it's not a group to tell us what to do. Okay, that's the the leadership working with collaboration with our staff, okay? This is about reporting about how we're doing and then identifying areas we should, we should pay attention to. I think it's it's more about that.
With the data.
Yeah, more identification, now analysis and identification rather than therefore these are the answers.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think this, I think that takes a lot more work at the school level, supporting the district, you know, with and with the staff there, as opposed to a group that's maybe, that maybe need one, so like that, you know.
Yeah, and I don't want to close it out. Sorry. Maybe you got something?
I, yeah, so it's also a group, I mean, it it is a large group, and I'm nervous about having that large, right? And and we need to be very thoughtful of how we we run, we, you know, organize it and manage the group, absolutely. But it's important, it's large on purpose because we want more stakeholders involved in diving into our data. You know, schools do it individually at their school, some departments do it, all different, all different ways it's done. But to have a clear way of how we look at dat- data and what data we look at in Boston Public Schools is the, it's kind of along the idea of no, of what we're going to do. When we dive into the data, what we decide to look at, whether it be at literacy, whatever we're able to do, you know, academic achievement is everything, right? So.
I'd say the job is this big.
So the group will have to choose an an hour of focus in order to make some, some, you know, improvements. And whether they focus on literacy or math or science or whatever the group ends up deciding, we do, we will collectively decide on what data we're looking at and dive in deep. But the the power of it, if we can, if we can do it right, and I mean, it's a large group and it's going to be a challenge to do that, but if we do it right, the power of that is we have a common understanding among all of those people, that very large group, of what achievement looks like and sounds like and feels like in Boston Public Schools, how we measure it, and then all of those people go back to their respective stakeholders or where they're representing, and their message, all of the message should be the same, that we as a group have decided that we are going to focus on X to really hone in as a district. I mean, we're going to do other things too, but that group is going to hone in on whatever the the data points them to, and the data will show us where to go. And we all need to go back and message that to our schools, our departments, our, you know, whatever representative you are and to to support the the district in moving forward in that area. And so it will be messaging, it'll be, you know, designing, deciding what is the key focus. It could be very powerful if it's done right. It could be very, you know, to have, if you look at that list, everybody marching in the same direction and saying, we need to improve on this, whatever they decided it's, right? It's not to come up with a laundry list of things that are wrong because that's not productive.
Right.
Right? Like, we we all come up with laundry lists. I can come up with them. Everybody can.
Right.
But to narrowing on one thing that we're going to work on and focus as a district and have a common message, and we're all going to go in that direction. That's the idea behind it. Is it going to be easy with a group of minimum thirteen, probably more? No. And that's why we're talking about the possibility of maybe an outside consultant to start us off. I mean, I certainly feel comfortable leading people looking at data, but it might be more powerful if we all learn this method together. If somebody come in and and help hone it, hone us in on doing that and to set us off on a nice path to do it the right way. So that's what we're asking, like, you know, these questions are important because it's it's a big committee that could be wonderful and powerful. But if we don't do it right, it's not going to be so.
No, I agree. I, it's worth it to be down. There's no doubt. I'm just trying to bring it in to find out what the actual price was. So how will, I'm expecting at some point over the next within this school year, I hope, but maybe not till the next, that new graduation standards are going to be coming forward now that we don't have M P A S as a requirement. Because government's talking about creating the new standards and possibly even tests.
Right, so they'll have to.
So is that something this this group would be in conversation with? Because at some point, the school committee has to agree on what those requirements are.
Right. Yeah, I don't think this group, this group would not do that because we, there's a sense of urgency for the competency determination for the class of twenty five.
Right.
Right? And it's going to, if we're going to do this well, we need to take it slow. And we might not be able to make recommendations by the spring. If we were up and running as a functioning body and really looking at data and maybe making some sort of goals for next year, I would feel that's a success. As far as making recommendations out that fast with that big of a group that's brand new, I'd be wary to say that. Just today, I was working with Principal Cook, and he's worked with his guidance department, and we've talked to other districts about competence, competency determination, and we are close to being ready to present something to the school committee on that. And we'll follow, we'll look at that. So that will be coming.
Okay.
But those are separate.
It's what what Liz brought up was with with M C A S to graduate require, probably going away. State Department of Education has has informed districts that we will need district based of local competency determination, okay? First and foremost is creating that for class of twenty point five, okay? And that's the work at the high school and maybe is supporting high school leadership on developing that right now. And that's an urgency because of timing.
Right.
But there's a longer, you know, work for, you know, for that to, left on a long term as well. That'll be coming to the school committee when we're ready to present you, you know, some more work has been done. That's separate from this quarter.
Okay.
Nothing.
Thank you.
I just want, do you want to just point out, I'm sorry, the last thing is that, like, work brings to you as it's being developed. But I'm I'm, I hope folks get that the that the president here is around something that's fully baked. Okay, no, it's, I mean, I hope that was obvious, but that's intended. As if this is something that that's going to be reporting to advise, reporting to you, we do our input on it, and we'll continue to shape it. Of course, I've got to work with GTA and GATE on as well for as we launch it, before we launch it. But just so, so often, sure, we'll give, we'll come to, I was going to make, and only give you the fully baked stuff. This is the process, you know, I want, I want to keep you, keep me up to date on the fires made on on many of these areas because they're new and they're important, and none more so than this.
Yeah, I I just wanted to add that I I don't want to rule out the well, kind of putting a cotton foot on the horse that, you know, it doesn't mean that a lot of smart people in these groups, and it doesn't mean that there can't be solutions born out of this group or potential solutions born out of this group, you know. You know, it's obvious, listening to people here tonight and listening to the last few school committees, but there's a disconnect there. At at a minimum, getting together, trying to work through some stuff, being able to hear each other out gives us at least a chance to come up with, to move in a positive direction and see if we come up with some solutions. I think that was the idea behind it, and it's like Ben said, it's it's got to be a work in progress. It's, you know, nothing's really completely set in stone. But I think at a, at a minimum, it gives us a chance to meet collaboratively and kind of say, okay, here are the issues, what can we do? And maybe, maybe out of that, some of those, taking everything into consideration, there can be some solutions born out of that. It's kind of my thinking on it.
So can I just follow up a little bit? So I, I mean, that's what I expected out of this group, but I, when you're asking us for suggestions, it just seems to me that there needs to be more brainstorming with school personnel, meaning parent professionals, the teachers and support staff and all that before we announce the world that where it's taking on community members and things like that. It just seems to me there needs to be more development of what this is before we bring in people outside of the school.
We'll get input from our folks and and then.
I think that just helps.
Yeah, until it's getting input from Paul.
And then just the original thinking that it would be one group, just because if we split the groups, you know, pre-K to five, six and twelve, we're going to miss some people, you know, one group for the other. So that's, so that's a possibility, two groups, or would it be, you know, for the special education director would obviously want to be presiding in in both groups, so so there's overlap there. And then also, are we thinking, you know, I see um the building representatives are the teachers that uh would be added to the the non-building rep teacher and Perez. Um, but just one teach, I don't know, I I saw one teacher and I thought, okay, you need more teachers and Perez on the committee are the working group. Um, so I guess I'm I'm just.
You know, you're touching on something.
Asking spaghetti questions.
Yeah, so you're you're touching on some of the complexity, the balance around both course run, run numbers and multiple teachers and some of that. So we course run multiple teachers and paragras, uh, uh, you know, that that span, the great, you know, the great spans, right? Um, and then you started getting into larger and larger.
Right, right, more pizza.
Right, you're working, fine.
Buy some salads.
Right, salad too. But um but that's that's part of the balance, that's the weight, right? And so you're really digging into that that complexity there because there's a, um, well, that's what we have to sort through.
Yeah.
The other piece on the on the the volume up, um, you know, I think where Kat who's heading, makes a lot of sense, I heard you on that about like, you know, there's some work together and maybe some some work where you're splitting, you know? And because there is real value in learning from here and the focus of the every different grades, across grades, man. Just like it's real value in learning across groups as well, so.
It it it's sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say to follow on, having an outside facilitator, I think, would be really important to help and answer some of those questions of how many people are we having bright perspectives, you know? Do we have enough of the perspectives in the room? Um, at what point is it, you know, enough? Or you know, you have gaps, it would be good to have somebody objective, new to new to our district, um, observing, you know, from your perspective as well. Um, but the, but this is born out of the fact that, you know, our, our results just aren't where they need to be. And I think we all acknowledge that our students should be learning at higher levels. Um, and there's urgency around that. We have invested a lot in curriculum, we've invested a lot in professional development, and we really need to start seeing some, you know, some effective um growth at a quicker rate. Um, because a lot of students just aren't changing, the revelation.
Just to wrap this part up, um, I'm going to keep just to sort of circle back here. Um, is just to circle back to the first, you'll do this. And and just to think of the words, I keep in mind is um bi-reclusive approach. This is very example, that can be, you know, intentionally isn't make a very, you know, that's a balanced approach to improvement. The group will identify what's going well, but also where we have more challenges. Um, and then clearly define role, cover that's night, like, what's the role of this group? What's the responsibilities? What's effective, what's doing this effectively in this group, okay? And then how we support the group and it's outside facilitator or other, you know, to do their work well. Now, so just wanted to use that as examples for what we're talking about in terms of this basic approach, so. That's that's where we are on 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 some of the real important pieces that were negotiated um between the teams. Um, uh, you know, collect bar agreements and just want to make sure you folks were sort of aware about the program for making and also timing.
So, um, it's a chime in on that, but um, you know, I I share concern about large groups, you know, a lot of cross talk. But maybe, maybe this should start with a core group, um, administrators uh representing each building. And, um, you know, as far as keeping the numbers down, uh, I, I don't understand that the, how how these individual stakeholder members, representatives were were decided upon. But GTA and the and the gate president and union building reps. Um, I don't understand why that is important. What, was that part of the negotiations?
Uh, yeah, the negotiations, it was, it was, um.
Because already that's like how many building representatives plus two presidents.
It's not necessarily all building reps, it says, uh, uh, it says one from each, yeah. Um, but I think it it was to show a joint effort and a common urgency on looking at student achievement and doing student achievement. Um, and that was a way during negotiations that the GTA leadership and GATE leadership um joined with us to to make the common statement that the importance of student achievement. And them being on that is is a, they're showing that.
Sure, I'm not, I'm not rejecting to that, but I think I think that could happen organically, seeing as we'll want, you know, teachers involved and included in these groups.
Yeah, it it could, it, that's how, this is how it came out from negotiations, that's what it was defined.
Also say that that, um, this isn't very common, I mean that in a good way, you know? Um, as as folks look at our agreements and stuff, this is one thing that stands out to them as being like, it's sort of like, like, tell me more about that. What what are you trying to do? And that's what be, and that's because it's a, um, you know, it's a, it's a diverted group. There were many, there were many different roles, including community members. So, um, again, um, work in progress, um, you know, it's 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 complex, it's complicated, um, but it has some more potential. Um, and it's really the examples I showed of of, I think, the way we want to work. And I have not worked where we do work and where we want to.
Yeah, I don't know how how this is going to be decided, what what the group's going to be and all that going forward. But I I just wanted to recommend starting small and then maybe add members as you go along, as you identify problems.
Yeah, yeah, that's that's helpful, it is, yeah. And maybe the core group is, the core group is is helping to shape it and form it, and then we expand, yeah.
And then the other thought was, of course, seems like there are academic bottlenecks at the transitions from elementary to middle school and also middle school to to high school, so that being a special concern as well, or focus.
Okay, my folks, uh, just moving on to some of the next pieces here. Well, I think it's always important, folks, um, and essential, um, which is the school calendar. So you have, um, uh, pack, it also hand out two paper copies, um, of the calendar. Um, second here, I can share this so everyone can see it. Um, so we have, um, revised, revised for forty five, forty six calendar. So, um, what many folks may know or may forget is that we are now building calendars two years ahead. So we see every, about this time of year, every year, we look at next year, okay? But now we're having two years ahead and that gives people a chance to do some planning. And we also learned that sometimes we have to make some slight changes in the upcoming year um because different, different circumstances, the primary day may change. Or in this case, um, a change, uh, regarding, um, uh, negotiations, you know, change. So, um, so there's only one provision that impacts, um, for the twenty five, forty six calendar, from a year ago. Um, and that's, it actually impacts, does impact the first day and last day of school for students. Um, uh, just as as, for context for yourself, but also the members watching, the folks watching, um, the three school staff days, uh, that happen out of when school is not in session. Um, and the third, through negotiations, the third was more clearly defined in terms of where and when it happens. Um, and that day will now happen just prior to school starting. So we'll now have two, um, staff workdays, I'm just calling that this sort of generic term, prior to school starting, immediately prior to school starting, out at, at, you know, at the, at the school buildings. Um, and then we have the third, one of those three, um, has been the professional development day, um, on November election day. Right? What that means is we had to adjust, um, the start of school slightly and the start, first day of school for twenty twenty five goes from Wednesday, September thirty, Thursday, September four. Of course, if we do that, we have to look at the end of the year, um, and that changed that last day from seventeen to twenty, twenty eighteen, one day, obviously, so. Um, so that's the change for twenty nine, twenty six, which you should consider and discuss and then move on.
I'll make a motion that we change the calendar to reflect the two thousand twenty five, twenty six school year to start September fourth.
For students.
For students and end July, I'm two eighteen, sorry, two eighteen, thousand three days.
Second.
I just put a motion out to discuss it.
Oh.
Change discussion. What it is, doesn't have to be. That's okay. What day is June eighteenth on?
That's Thursday.
What's the thirteenth on that year?
The thirteenth of what?
June seven, okay.
Um.
Nineteen.
Nineteen, Friday.
Nineteen is Friday, nineteen.
That's all, yeah, I think it's a thirteenth.
Yeah, so that, so that that of course means that if we do have a snow day back here, that we would, uh, go to the, to the following week.
July, every June twenty first.
Twenty second, Monday, yeah. Uh, we, so that's twenty, and and then, uh, twenty six, twenty seven, this is draft, okay?
Maybe have a motion on the table.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Are you ready to vote?
I'm just trying to speak real quick.
Sure, go ahead.
No, I just had to step out of the.
Oh, we just had a calendar.
It's a calendar.
What did you vote on?
We're voting.
On twenty five, twenty six.
Yeah.
We're changing the first day of school, September third.
Where else?
It's changed to September fourth, and then the last day of school will be June eighteenth instead of June seventh.
Twenty five, twenty six, yeah.
There's a motion on the table, it's been seconded, so.
Need to know anything else, okay. Uh, roll call vote.
Ms. Texer, yes.
Mr. McKean.
Yes.
Chip, Kristen Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Madlin.
Yes.
Mayor Varga.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes. Uh, next thing going forward is, um, the draft of twenty six, twenty seven, the school calendar. You told me to run this by, um, uh, the, you know, to share the GTA we intend to today, um, uh, as a draft, but that meeting had been canceled. Um, and so I put this case highlights here, um, and you have in your packet, you have it, um, you know, while we turned out. It's not, right?
No, we're good listeners. Yeah, well, that's it.
Okay, I want to follow along, there are copies, copy print, right?
No, we don't have it.
No.
Yeah, the draft is better.
Hold on, because they're right here, sorry.
You take me passive.
Yeah.
Going old school, old school.
There you go.
About that, folks, I thought we had to give it to you. The highlights are also up on the screen here, so, uh, the first day for teachers, ESP's on a free day staff, so August thirty first. So this is one of the years, because of when Labor Day is, that we would, um, start, uh, school before Labor Day. Labor Day is on, um, on the seventh of November, I'm sorry, September, um, and. I'm taking it right, so the first day, uh, for school based staff, August thirty first, August thirty first and and September first are school based staff workdays. Third day of school for grades K, sorry, K, it's one through twelve, September second. Um, last day for, uh, first day for students in pre-K and K, it's September ninth. As you know, we do screening for for kindergarten students typically in the interim. Um, and they have some, you know, some orientation activities, for partial days or stuff, that's the first full day really. The last day for students will be June sixteen, twenty twenty seven. Uh, December break goes from half day on December twenty third and school students return on January second. Typical, right, right? British. Every break is the sixteenth, the nineteenth, twenty twenty seven, April break is the twentieth, twenty third, twenty twenty seven. And then, um, the election days, um, we now, as you know, um, take off in in the election days. The state primary like was this year, this this last fall, actually happens on the, on one of the staff workdays, okay? Um, which, uh, those students in the building.
I think you have the day we return for break, right, that makes that the fourth, January fourth.
Be the fourth. Good question. December thirty first, January fourth, Thursday, so.
Right, guys, wrong, wrong on this.
Yeah, it's wrong.
You know, the presentation.
Oh, listen.
Oh, on the presentation.
He's saying on calendar.
He's. Oh, no.
On the January fourth.
Yes, I, this is incorrect on the presentation.
Yeah.
It is, yeah, so it's wrong, but.
January fourth is the new return.
Yep. Um, uh. Yep, since the state primary is is Tuesday the first, now students' school days hours are fine. And then the state election is on November third, so there's professional development day for all staff, as it always, as it always is. And we'll, uh, the calendar is correct, the presentation is wrong, the calendar is correct, but I'm sorry about the typo. This will be, will be voted on two weeks from now. Uh, and we will, we're going to change is that, uh, you might notice now or you might notice in interim, or that we may discover running by a few of the.
I have a question on this year's calendar. Anyone may not be able to answer it, but Mayor Varga may be able to chime in.
Yep.
Um, is I believe we're going to have a special election of some sort for the housing issue. So is that going to be a surprise day off we had to plan for?
There's no way, there's no way to add another tough day off and and at this point. So we're going to have, we're going to have like a huge one for decades, one decades, uh, the election day, uh, the next week. I I mean, I'll see, I'll just, I'll just, I don't see, I don't see, I'm going to consider something, but I don't see with the way our calendar is right now.
No, I didn't say on the calendar, I just want to address the concern as opposed to a week before it happens now, that's all, or not, tonight, but sooner than late.
I don't believe, Mayor, that that date is, that that date has not been set, has it?
Um, the city council is meeting next Tuesday. The date that they're kicking around is April twenty fourth, a Thursday, which is during April vacation. So obviously, the 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 full council hasn't taken it out, they haven't voted, but I would, um, say there's a ninety nine percent chance that will be voted yes next, um, next time they meet.
Of all the days they could pick, that would be our 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 first choice, so.
Well, originally, they were thinking about a Saturday, which would have a lot of overtime costs, so that the the next choice was during the vacation week. And the Thursday, we have staff that work late anyway, so it's, it's, this election is going to, not to get political, the election is going to cost us about thirty plus thousand dollars, uh, so we're trying to minimize the cost as much as we can. Uh, it's, it's a council function, though, uh, and but I support what, uh, Council President Gross presented to me.
He consulted the leadership about it, it's, well, it's a product earlier on this process, so, um.
Yeah, just the twenty nine, thirty, thirty one. It drew me off because I, wait, one is January day behind, but then I realized it was still December thirty.
Thank you.
Be great, sorry.
All right. It's from twenty nine to thirty one. Your patch, thank you.
Yep. Uh, and then the last piece for tonight is this is my end, my evaluation process. So this is the new timeframe, very twentieth, so in, uh, a little while, I'll provide you, uh, goals, my reflection, evaluation report to the school committee. Um, and then you'll see the test dates. Uh, school committee members will have the thirty first to complete your individual, uh, individually, you think, uh, evaluation work. And then, um, February thirty first, uh, you submit your evaluations to the school board chair, that is fancy. So have a couple weeks to to summarize those and and do the report. And then February twenty sixth, the second meeting in February will be when, um, uh, my evaluation happens at, uh, I don't speak of school. Um. That's all for, um.
Next, I'm going to do this is the committee reports. We have one building and finance subcommittee meeting on December eighteenth, two thousand twenty four. So I will give you a brief update, even though I don't have an announcement from that meeting. Um, one important item on the agenda was the budget calendar, believe it or not, and it's time to develop next year's budget. Um, it did get pushed back a little bit this year, um, it's, in other words, it's a little bit later than it started last year. But that's, we discussed the superintendent, CMO, presented to the district leadership team in December, did that happen?
I mean, we're working on it.
We're working on it, okay, we haven't had that next meeting to follow up on that yet. Um, superintendent CFO of budget meetings is January, so those will be coming soon. District leaders will present their priorities to the B and F subcommittee in February, um, next month. Um, and discuss different topics to develop. The superintendent will present the budget update to the school committee on March twelfth. B and F subcommittee will review the budget books in April sixteenth, two thousand twenty five. The school committee will vote on a public hearing on April thirtieth. 2025. The school committee will vote on a public hearing on April 30th. Will release our draft to the newspaper for publication on May 1st. The school committee public hearing that we will hold will be, is currently scheduled for May 14th. The school committee vote and submission to the mayor and the city council will happen on May 28th. The presentation of the fiscal year 26 draft budget to the city BNF will be held in June along with the city council's final vote on the budget, and then we are scheduled to vote our final budget on 2025. So we didn't vote this, it was, I thought we had voted in the past, but we decided not to vote it and just put this information out because if it changes, we wouldn't have to come back to have a vote. But it sounds like we're on schedule already with this happening. We'll receive an update next week at our BNF meeting. So
But it's an easy part of the
I just can't believe we're talking budget, I haven't got past that yet. At our meeting, we did the usual, but we talked about the special education tuition and transportation out of school district update. We did have our special education director, Mike Davis, join us, and I believe he's going to bring us in February at a school committee meeting, so, you know, gonna he didn't give us a report or anything like that, that we held at our whole school committee meeting, but he was there to he answered some questions, he tells us about some changes that are being made to assist with the education tuition and transportation budget, which seems to be making good progress. We did have a couple of budget transfers that we had on the agenda, the, that agenda that we already voted. And pretty much budget seems to be, I'm not going to say looking good, but we're not in a bad position like we were last year at this time. But as you know, the topic of special education changes so fluently that that could change. But so far, we are able to manage the budget that we were presented. Although I thought we were below budget on one of the
If we were.
Yeah.
Circuit breaker balance.
Circuit breaker balance. Was it, is that we got the $100,000 decrease?
We
From the audit?
That plus typically, our circuit breaker balance is $1 million at this time of year. And our balance is $466,000, so.
So we're low.
Yeah, we're low on that.
Not under budget. Under budget. We have less available than, less.
Less available funds.
Well, I was a little bit confused because we had a little bit more available in the spending where we didn't hire physicians that we thought we were going to.
Right.
But the, so that account, those accounts were a little bit over, not in the full budget. But ultimately, we are not, we are usually out, feel comfortable with the circuit breaker balance. Fingers crossed that we can hold ours on our own until the end of the year. But those conversations will reoccur and decisions will have to be made if it continues in that direction. Do we know if that, the special education fund on the city side hasn't been developed yet, right? Because of free cash hasn't been certified?
Correct. But it's on, it's being planned for.
January.
Yeah, it's, yeah, the, they're going to have the free cash completed. And then when that is certified by the state, then they can set up the stable, special ed stable station fund.
Right. As you know, our budget was cut approximately $2 million a year. So we do have that to rely on if and when necessary. So we just, as we do every meeting, we'll keep our eyes on the topic and watch closely and inform the committee as we progress through the second half of the year. Thank you. Okay, next item of business is action. And we, for the only action, we have acceptance of grants. So I move that we accept the Gloucester Education Foundation District-wide Elementary Course grant in the amount of $4,100.33. Okay, discussion? I will vote, please.
Ms. Texera Prince.
Yes.
Mr. McKee.
Yes.
Chairperson Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
Mayor Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Minion.
Yes.
I think I'd like to read the next three together. Yeah, thanks. I move that we accept the Gloucester Education Foundation O'Malley Academy grant in the amount of $31,000, $31,200. And also the Gloucester Education Foundation Music Technology Upgrades Grant in the amount of $11,285.57. And the Gloucester Education Foundation Romeo and Juliet workshops with Lanes Coven grant in the amount of $5,795.11. And I so moved. Okay.
Yes, sorry.
Any discussion?
Yeah, the Lanes Coven grant, that's, you know about that workshop?
And so eighth grade is studying Romeo and Juliet, they also study it in ninth grade too. This is starting to build a nice vertical alignment connection from the 3rd to 9th grade. But this year, GEF is sponsoring the eighth graders to work, to go to Lanes Coven and, and see Romeo and Juliet and learn.
Oh, okay. Do they have a production going?
Any more discussion? I will vote, please.
Ms. Texera Prince.
Yes.
Mr. McKee.
Yes.
Chairperson Clancy. Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
Mayor Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Minion.
Yes.
Goes to the action. Anybody got any ideas? So we are going into executive session. Pursuant to executive session, purpose three in Mass General Law 38, section 21A, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Gloucester Massachusetts Association. I so moved.
Am I up?
You are.
This is, since this is the only item on the executive session, I'm going to recuse even from the vote. As you know, my wife is a member of the MNA, she's a union nurse, so I'm going to log off now without voting on this. So, have a great night.
I will vote, please.
Ms. Texera Prince.
Yes.
Mr. McKee.
Yes.
Chairperson Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
Mr. Minion.
Yes.
Okay, we will, out of executive, executive session, only for the purpose to adjourn.